Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Well, welcome, as I call it, to the April Workshop of the Scamia County School Board. The purpose of this workshop is an open discussion on items brought forth by the board and the superintendent, along with a review of the agenda items for our regular board meeting. Please silence your cell phones and other electronic devices at this time. If you wish to speak at public forum, you must complete a speaker request form located on the table at the rear of the room and bring it forth to Ms. Harris at the front table. Our first item of discussion tonight is the Washington High School Marketing Academy.
Mr. Superintendent Board, as we say every month, thank you for giving us this opportunity to show off the great things that are happening around our school district. I know that we all just came from a luncheon where we saw what happens when students in career and technical classrooms are able to explore careers that they're interested in. And we've got some students here, Ms. Wendy Evans and the Marketing and Entrepreneurship Academy from Booker T. Washington High School. They brought along some DECA students and they're going to tell you what DECA is. But know this, that all of our career academies have these outstanding career and technical student organizations that are co-curricular. They are intertwined into what the student is learning in the classroom. And then that helps them intertwine those skills into the real world out there. And these students are going to have a good time telling you all about that. So I'm going to get out of the way and let them come on up here. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. I'm Wendy Evans, a teacher at Booker T. Washington High School with the Marketing and Entrepreneurship Academy. I've been at Washington since 2022 and I've been working to revive a program that has had many years of success. Mrs. Carla Ross left a program that had a positive impact on thousands of students. And it's my goal and vision to have the program up and running at that level. I'm really super proud of the students before you today for stepping up and receiving their industry certifications, taking the lead in our DECA organization and giving back to the school and community with various projects. Now I'm going to turn this over to them.
Good afternoon. I'm Warren Kirkman, a senior and the vice president of leadership for Booker T. Washington DECA. Marketing principles are the foundation for which the youth can use to achieve a career in marketing, finance, hospitality, and business management. These principles are essential for owning and operating a business and can help teach students the necessities for their life. Students are taught about financial literacy, which is not normally taught. As an example of our academy career pathway, our partnership with Members First Credit Union employs our students as tellers, which is a stepping stone into banking. I and several other members of DECA have taken the opportunity and worked at not only the school branch, but in actual bank locations.
Hello, my name is Eric Layden and I'm a senior at Booker T. Washington. I've been a part of the Marketing Academy for three years and I'm also the chapter's vice president for hospitality. And I can say that being involved with this academy has several positive impacts on both students and the local community. As a student, I can say personally that this academy gives students hands-on experience in marketing, business management, and entrepreneurship, preparing students for the future careers. It also creates networking opportunities for internships, mentorships, and job placement. The academy also helps develop skills with students such as public speaking, financial literacy, digital marketing, and business planning. It may also lead to scholarships and often aligns with college pathways. It also strengthens community ties. We often collaborate with local organizations, businesses, and nonprofits. An example is when we worked with Maxwell Respite Center and Re-Entry Alliance Pensacola to bring meals and clothes to the homeless.
Good afternoon. I'm Kira Jones, a senior at Booker T. Washington High School. I have been in this academy for four years and I serve as a chapter campaign director. This program offers a sequence of courses that provide coherent and rigorous content aligned with challenging academic standards and relevant technical knowledge and skills needed to prepare for further education and career in the marketing, sales, and service career cluster. Ninth graders take the Marketing Essentials course. Here you'll learn the basics of marketing as well as prepare to obtain your first certification in the academy. Tenth graders will take marketing applications. This class is referred to as the prep class as they prepare everything for the academy's student-led business, the Cat Shack. Students will essentially set up everything needed to keep the 11th and 12th grade class flowing smoothly. They will also work on obtaining their professional bookkeeping certification. 11th graders will take marketing management and/or business ownership. In these courses, the students run their own business, the Cat Shack. The Cat Shack sells food, drinks, and apparel to the students of Booker T. 12th graders will take independent study or OJT. Here, they can either continue running and overall supervising the Cat Shack, building their knowledge and experience in the entrepreneurship world, or they can leave the school and go to another job. Both classes build training in the workforce, ensuring student efficiency post-graduation. Personally, moving forward, I will be using my knowledge gained to apply my skills to real-world situations. I will also be majoring in business post-school. This academy has provided me with the basics needed to succeed. I will seek internships and even entry-level positions in marketing for more experience. This academy has allowed me to build a strong foundation in my career.
Hello, my name is Thailand Chambers. I am a junior at Booker T. Washington and I've been an active member in DECA for three years. As a part of our academy, we pursue two primary certifications. The first one we take is entrepreneurship and small business. After that certification, we pursue professional bookkeeping. Earning these two certifications demonstrates a strong mastery of essential business skills and can provide several benefits for students and professionals, both in career advancement and business success. These certifications show employers and colleges that you have practical business knowledge and financial skills. Many businesses prefer candidates with bookkeeping, entrepreneurship knowledge, making you more competitive in the job market. It also helps qualify you for roles like small business manager, financial assistant, bookkeeper, or marketing specialist. The professional bookkeeping certification ensures you that you can track cash flow, manage expenses, and understand financial reports, crucial for running a successful business. You gain real-world skills by learning how to manage finances, balance books, and use accounting softwares like QuickBooks, which lead to having more confidence in starting a business. This confidence can reduce risk of business failure by equipping you with essential entrepreneurial and financial skills. Passing and learning these certifications has led me to start and develop my own business called Bright Features Car Detailing.
Hello, my name is Cooper Lineman and I'm a student at Booker T. Washington. I am here as a part of the Marketing and Entrepreneurship Academy. Like Thailand, I also have my own business called Coop's Auto Detailing. We specialize in detailing all types of automotive vehicles and we even come to you. Although I started in middle school, I've used some of the marketing strategies that we imply here at the Cat Shack. I've learned to be simplistic when posting ads to various social media platforms. This academy offers many enhancements to post-secondary opportunities. College admissions and demonstrated commitment. Active participation showcases a dedication to business disciplines, making you a more attractive candidate to colleges and universities. College credits. Our academy offers courses that align with college curriculum, potentially allowing you to earn college credits while still in high school. Networking with industry professionals. Exposure to professionals through academy events can lead to internship opportunities and industry insights. Academies often facilitate internships, providing practical experience and professional connections.
Hello, my name is Jude Poller, current VP assisting and representing District One. I've been active within DECA for nearly four years now and have loved every minute of it. As you can see, many of our members here that are presented today are very active, both inside and outside of the academy, even some starting up their own businesses. Our activities in our Marketing and Entrepreneurship Academy are interactive, hands-on, and relevant to world-class business scenarios. Here's some of the most engaging ways that we involve students. We have our Shark Tank-style competitions where students create and pitch business ideas for a simulated business of their choice, as well as they will construct a business plan, financing, and legal steps, and then present all this to a panel of judges, which includes students, classroom teachers, and other business leaders. We also have a simulated stock market challenge using the stock market game to teach investment strategies and financial literacy in a safe and anonymous environment. Students will start with $100,000 and from there invest into anything they please and compete to make the most money in a volatile system. We also have case studies and guest speakers where they analyze real-world business successes and failures with insights from local entrepreneurs. This enables students to get a personalized help from people who have become successful in their own fields. We also have a school-based enterprise, which was, like said before, our Cat Shack, where students can run the school store and apply real business concepts in a real setting. This also enables students to train and learn about a small business from all aspects and levels, from being a dishwasher up to a manager and an accountant. We also have a Wildcat Credit Union. Having a credit union on site enables students, not only in the Marketing and DECA Academy, but also the ones who are not. It teaches them in financial literacy as well as they create and run a bank account with the location working as a true branch. We also have our DECA participation, competing in business and marketing events, leadership training, and networking opportunities. Here, students are able to apply their learned skills in both state competitions at CDC and in international competitions at ICDC. There, students are able to compete to gain awards, scholarships, and recognition for their hard work. We also do field trips to local businesses, such as visiting marketing agencies, startups, or corporate offices to see real-world applications. We also will be attending trade shows and entrepreneurship expos. Attending business expos or setting up booths to promote student-room businesses. And this year, we will be invited to Pensacola's EnterCon Conference. We also do community service projects such as organizing fundraisers, marketing campaigns, or events for nonprofits. This is all done through our fall and spring helping hands and individual donations at our chapter. And even at our chapter, specifically, we were able to be out Cypress Bay down in Miami, who had nearly 2,000 members in their academy alone. We also will be doing, another way that the Marketing Academy and DECA prepares for future, is via its leadership programs and opportunities. And for a personal example of my own, I'm currently working towards joining the military via Navy ROTC, and which will show a heavy emphasis on leadership, which I have learned and exercised through the academy and through DECA. And these leadership skills as well has even enabled me to run for being the state representative in Florida, which we haven't had in nearly 14 years. As you can see, the Marketing Academy is influential in teaching students personal financial literacy, leadership skills, and marketing. Is there any questions that y'all have for us?
On your stock market investments, are you using some paper trades? On the brokers, they let you go do paper trades? Have y'all done any of that or? Yeah. Y'all have done that?
Yes, so we have the stock market game, which is directly tied to the actual stock market where students are able to pretty much practice their stock market investments without having the same risk of investing.
Same risk as I get into, yes. Especially you getting calls and puts and all those good things, yes. Another example, amazing academy we have here in Scamia County. And you guys, you know, congratulations. I mean, you're looking ahead and it's going to pay off for y'all in the long run.
Thank you. Anything else?
I also want to congratulate you on doing it and sticking with it. I'm glad to see that the DECA is going to continue. And I like the goal of keeping things going back to the Carla Ross standard and things. The Cat Shack has always been there and has always been very worthwhile. Appreciate that. I will ask the gentleman who has the car detailing, have you ever thought about a charitable thing? Like Mr. Shackle's ride looks really bad. Every time I drive by there, I think, oh, poor Mr. Shackle. So you might want to hit him up first.
Yeah, so I've done a couple, like, small fundraisers for my mom's. She works with Reading Pals, so I do some stuff with them. I haven't gotten to the point where I'm crazy big, so I can't do anything that's...
Well, at least take the message back that somebody's looking out for Mr. Shackle. Tell him, tell him that he needs help. But I do like the attitude. I like what you all were doing. I congratulate you. The things that you're learning and going and doing now will definitely be with you for the rest of your life and it's a good start. And I'm glad that you found your way with it thus far. And I thank the teacher for stepping up and doing also. Thank you.
I would also like to echo my board members. You did a wonderful job. Thank you to the teacher. Forgot the name, I'm sorry. Wendy Evans, okay. Thank you so much. The financial literacy, the marketing skills that these children, shouldn't say children, young adults, right, are learning are very, very impressive. About the gentleman that has the car detailing, I'm going to have to get your number, okay? Because my car needs washing, a lot of pollen.
I want to congratulate each and every one of you. As I was listening to you talk, one of the things that I found very interesting is the length of time each of you have been in the program, which is outstanding, you know? You're learning a skill set now that will be valuable to you the rest of your life. So, and I also noticed, Ms. Evans, that there was, that each one of them mentioned the hand-on activities that they're doing. That's such an integral part of the learning process. So congratulations for all you do. Congratulations to each one of you.
And also thank you very much for what you're doing for public education. I always say that we don't tout our horn enough in public education. And this is another example why we're the best reason we can educate the youth of Escamia County. And you're a great example of that. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything?
Yep, very proud of you students. And just as proud of you, Ms. Evans, thank you for everything you do and how you present yourself. Thank you very much.
Hey, let's give him a round of applause, please. Thank you very much. Before we move on to our calendar, I have to get this out of the way. I just want to congratulate all the University of Florida fans on their national championship. And that's all I'm going to say about it, Ms. Payne. I'm not going to say anything. Next on our, next on our, is the calendar. Everyone, please, board members, please look at the calendar for months of April and May. Let me know, let us, each of us know if there's any changes, any additions to April and May. We have the construction career data in Santa Rosa County on the 22nd and 23rd. Anything, any additions for April? Okay, let's look, turn over and look at May.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot going on in May. We talked about it as a staff yesterday. Ms. Payne is working on putting together a one-sheeter. Maybe it may get to two sheets and provide it to Ms. Buswell. So that way, you may not be able to make it to everything that's going on, but everything that we're informed about, you'll have an idea on one of those two pages about where it's at. I can tell you there's so much going on that we can't get to everything, so.
I appreciate it. Can't believe we're already talking about graduation. Any additions or any, anything jumping out in May? Yes, ma'am. Yes, yeah. And we need to discuss June workshop because I believe a couple of us will be in Tampa at the summer conference. And we're scheduled to have our, on the 12th, the discussion workshop. Can we move it to the 16th? Which will be Monday?
Is that going to give staff enough time to?
We will, we will do the best we can. What I would ask is if you end up with something that you see on the agenda on the 16th, you give us grace to work with Ms. Odom to make certain we get it on the agenda without a lot of ample notice because it'll just be the one day. This is always, it's been my experience that when we found ourselves in the summer months not being able to meet on Thursday, this is when we have moved it to Monday and we've been able to make it work.
Question, sir. If we move the workshop to early on Monday, like at nine o'clock, so that at least you have a half-day to get things, would it be better for staff in that regard?
Seven thirty, eight o'clock?
Seven?
Nine o'clock would be good.
Would that work? I'm just asking, would that work better for?
Oh, no, wait a minute. I'm being told, who's using it? Oh, okay. We can't have it in this room at nine o'clock in the morning. We have an ESOL event. What, you know what time it ends? Do we know what time the ESOL event ends?
The whole day that day.
Wouldn't have any time then to? Is there another room that would suffice Ms. Odom to have a workshop meeting in?
I would say that the facilities people would know better than I, but it would, it would need to be something...
I know we have, we have some small auditoriums in a couple of places. We have a big auditorium.
You could absolutely do it at a school auditorium. We just need to make sure that we advertise it.
With Spencer Bibbs, Room 1, like, I think it's Room 120, would that work?
Is that the former cafeteria, I believe?
Yes, ma'am. Y'all be comfortable with that for the workshop? Spencer Bibbs, yeah. The teacher training center now?
Do they have, do they have the same, do we know, do they have the same? Streaming information, uh, do they have, we customarily stream all of our workshops. Do they have these resources there?
I was at a conference, BSI, and they were, I don't know if they were streaming, but I was able to see everything that was occurring.
Mr. Ingram informs me that they can and would be able to stream from there. They simply wouldn't have all the voting and tally information, but they can certainly set up the stream from there.
Which we wouldn't need voting and tally for a workshop, so.
He's going to, Ms. Payne is checking to see when the end time is on the ESOL meeting. Uh, if that's where we, if we can have it here, we will, if we can't, we'll have it at Spencer Bibs. Everybody comfortable with that? So it'd be that Monday at nine o'clock.
Sounds good. The sixteen? Any more discussion on the calendar? Okay. Next, Mrs. Superintendent, public forum update.
No, sir, I don't have anything at this time.
That brings us to Mrs. Burgash, discipline status.
Good morning, or good afternoon, crazy morning. Um, while I was out campaigning, the number-one concern from a lot of parents, community members, and teachers with discipline. And I know that we are looking at different initiatives, the superintendent's staff is looking at different initiatives, thinking outside the box, to find out what are some strategies that we can do to increase student engagement and increase student achievement. But also, we need to look at initiatives for discipline. I feel that we are losing a lot of families due to maybe, uh, middle school options and even high school, but also discipline issues, discipline concerns. The students at some places, they don't feel safe, or they don't feel heard. So, we want to make sure that some initiatives are put in place to help our, um, families have a choice about discipline and ensure that. I know that I spoke with Mr. Tompkins and he's gonna come up a little bit and share the current status of what's going on. Um, I wasn't able to look through Navigation 360, I know you sent me that link and I wasn't, I apologize, but I know just from a brief discussion, there's a lot of information that can be utilized to help those students. So I'm gonna go ahead and give the floor to you and then I'll interject.
I'm always, uh, happy to talk about the state of discipline in the school district because we have overcome a lot in, in the years that I've been in the district and where we're at now and especially post-COVID. Um, we are, uh, working hard in the schools every day to make sure that our schools are safe. Uh, the superintendent has a clear message, uh, to the schools and to the community that he wants safe schools and that's the, that's what we, uh, follow totally and completely. Uh, we have a strong, robust, um, cr- matrix as far as discipline is concerned that spells out what each and every offense is, uh, so that parents have a clearer and better understanding, uh, as far as that. But we don't just focus on that, we have other initiatives that we look at, um, that we follow through on. I, I think the number-one issue, um, that Ms. Burgash, uh, spoke about was bullying. And what is bullying in that? So I have asked actually Mike Samala, uh, who is in, um, the Department of Alternative Education, to come up and speak to you about some of the initiatives of what bullying, that we do as far as bullying, the school violence prevention, uh, programs that we have and, and the system that we use to monitor the Jeffrey Johnson Act and, and make, because, uh, I think that's important for you to understand and it's important for the community to understand and also what the true definition of bullying is. A lot of times our parents believe it is a one-time incident where something happens to a student, but the state definition of bullying is something that is systemic and repetitive in nature. And so times, so sometimes just educating the public, uh, is what we need to do, but we take all incidents serious. So, I'm gonna let, uh, Dr. Samala come up and talk a little bit about bullying.
Good afternoon. Um, I'm not sure where you would like to start, what, what would be some of your first questions you would have?
Um, if you could please let the community know about the ways that the families can report bullying or report any concerns they have.
Uh, yes, ma'am. So the Alternative Education Office, we, uh, manage the school violence reporting system through the district. Uh, there's a couple of different ways you can get to that system to file a report. Um, it's housed on the, um, the front page of the, um, Skimby County website. Scroll to the bottom of the page, there's a red tile that says, "Report School Violence." So, um, parents can go in there, uh, students can go in there, they can file an anonymous report or they can go in and put as much information in as they would like. Once that, um, report comes on through, um, the system and they submit it, it gets routed to the, um, principal of that school. The principal then will, um, assign an investigator to, um, invest, uh, conduct an investigation on the actual, um, report that's come across. And the school has ten days to conduct their investigation and close out the report.
Um, I know there are alternatives for discipline issues for children with either, uh, serious offenses at middle and high school, what about the elementary?
Uh, there is a, you know, for students that do, um, miss, act out or misbehave at the elementary school to such a severe level that, um, it's impeding the instruction of the classroom. And, um, the principals feel like it is necessary for them to be, have a change of placement hearing for them. Um, then that also comes through my department, just like, um, middle and high school would. Um, and then it's, but Ms. Coutts is actually, uh, the one that, um, once we have the meeting, it's referred back to her for final approval as far as that. So, um, there isn't, students are removed, uh, from the elementary school environment. It's not something that we take lightly, uh, at the elementary school. We really try as many interventions as possible before we reach, uh, that point. We use the RTI system, uh, we use the Navigate 360 curriculum. We, we use all we can do and all the tools at our, uh, disposal to, to, to try to get past that point, but it's just sometimes necessary. It's at a much lower rate than the middle and high school, I just want to make that very clear. Um, and because we understand they're littles and you have to take care of them, you gotta work through them and we're trying to change the behavior, especially at that age, um, to make sure that we can get them where they're, uh, in a better path at the middle and high school level.
From the Achieve Academy, called Caps. That wasn't here the first time you were here, but it's here now. Mr. Tompkins is correct, you know, that's not something we look to do on the first offense, unless the severity of the offense would dictate that's where that should be. Keep going, Jeremy.
No, I'm sorry, I, I didn't tell you about Caps, I appreciate that, sir. You know, we have, we've always been a district, there are a lot of districts that just expel students and we've added that to what we can do, but we use that as a last resort. Uh, there are a lot of districts that, that's all they have. They don't have the alternative schools that we have, such as Success Academy and Achieve Academy and they do a wonderful job, but we've always taken education as a priority and we provide them those opportunities. Expulsion is for those that are failed to take, um, advantage of those opportunities and, uh, we use that sparingly, but we use it as necessary because first and foremost, instruction in the classroom has to, uh, take place. And so we do what is necessary. I can promise you my office stays busy. We work within the framework as far as what we have to help schools, uh, when they ask for it. We provide, um, um, information to them as far as what's available and if we can come out and help and assist, we do that. And it's the same way, uh, with alternative education. So, um, those are the things that we have. I would say I want to go to Navigate 360, I want to talk about, it's called Compass Now. And I can provide the same link to y'all if you want to look at it. It's the curriculum that we've been use, using for years, uh, here and actually we helped to create it years ago. It's actually purchased through Student Services. Um, and it is, has a portion of it that is intervention-based, a portion of it that we use for our mental health training. It's all-inclusive as far as that and it can be used K through twelve. You're not redoing the lessons, it's individual lessons. If a kid gets a certain lesson on something in first grade, it's gonna be different from what they get in second, third, and fourth grade if they had to do that. It's, we have lessons for bullying, going back to what you're talking about. So, part of the Jeffrey Johnson Act is that we have to be able to provide counseling and intervention to both the perpetrator and the victim in that situation. That is a tool that we use. So once again, we're proactive in that, but once again, our primary focus is creating a safe school.
And also, also in that curriculum, parents can be involved in that. So we encourage our parents to do those activities with their children.
Correct, there's a parent portion in which they can go in there and they can do the similar lessons with their children because we want, especially at the elementary level, not that we don't at the middle and high, if we're trying to correct behavior, we need the parents to be on board with us and working with that.
Do you have any questions?
I, I do. Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, you know, I've been on this thing for a, a long time and, uh, and what I always remind everybody, especially in the world of competition, we're in competition with the, with the, uh, checks that are given out to the parents to go to any place they want to go to. We cannot allow children who have those twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty referrals that take you all night to go through their, and you can see it, bouncing the bus, bouncing the classroom. Um, we cannot allow them class, we, we had an elementary school one time, and he might remember the situation. We had three students. One shut down a first-grade class, the other two shut down two kindergarten classes. Had to get Malcolm Thomas involved in that one. And, uh, so, it can cause disturbance and what will happen is if there's, if we can't have good order and, and, uh, and, uh, a good su- environment for the students, parents will pull them, they're gone. That's where we get in a situation where our school's almost empty, we didn't get control of it the right way. But, now I will say, Teresa, I've been on this board for a while. Keith's gone a long way of making this better this year, cause I had to view the Fight Club videos, I had all that kind of different stuff during the predecessor. And, uh, it's been much better, and I read it by phone calls that I, that I get. And, uh, that's been way down, so Keith's been doing, he's also said that we're doing true expulsions now. Okay? Because what I told the superintendent is, Kyle Hesse ain't giving no extra credit for holding a student that we cannot control. They're not giving us extra credit, saying, hey, good job, you know? Uh, they're, they're looking at our school scores and what, and other, other performance ratings we have. But, so, it is very important, but I appreciate how much y'all been working on it. Uh, we're not gonna cure, if, there'll always be bullying and, and that kind of stuff. You just try to limit it as best you can. And sometimes, uh, and we had this situation, I had a parent go on social media, say how her child was bullying, yeah, got bullied and everything else, and then when you look at the film on the bus, it was her child that actually was bullying all the other kids. So that, that buil- bullying, being a bully type, but it's, it's a hard thing to, um, control cause back in the old days, a lot of kids kind of worked it out on their own and, and went, but you don't have that today, you know? So, uh, but anyway, we, we need to keep, keep on, um, I think we're doing a better job of having a good environment in, in the, uh, schools and we, we gotta allow the teachers to teach and the students to learn. And, uh, I'm not talking about the onesies or twosies, you know that. So, um, but yeah, I appreciate every, every bit y'all trying to do and to maintain in a competition environment like we're in.
Just a bit of positive news, and I know that all of y'all might want to ask a question. I, I want to say this, cause this is positive. The number, you know, you mentioned when we would have more than fifty and, and that, that's a rarity, um, these days. We have really focused on that. Those high numbers are less than one percent of anything within our district. And so, we have worked hard to push through that because if you have that many referrals, there's another path that you need to be going, but there are some situations. But, beyond that, um, our biggest issues that we deal with on a day-to-day basis are tardies, uh, vaping. Um, those are the same issues that if you look out in the public, that's what you have. There was a time when our biggest issues were fighting and those major issues. It's not that way now. I'm not saying it doesn't occur, I'm just saying it's down the line. So we are making progress as far as the district and it's because of the team approach that we have at the school and within, and within, um, all the departments. So, um, things are moving in the right direction and it is because of leadership.
Yeah, Mr. Herron?
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions here and make a couple of comments. The first comment is, uh, I've been visiting all of the schools, I'm through two districts now, five and one. And one of the questions I always ask principals is, uh, how is your school climate and particularly in the area of discipline? And what I'm hearing overwhelmingly out there is that there has been a steady, steady improvement over the last three years and you're confirming that by things you're saying. Also, the severity of the referrals, am I, am I sensing that correctly, Mr. Thompson? Yes?
You, you are, uh, that's what I was alluding to. Our major referrals that we have, and like, like I said, they're never all gonna be gone, but the frequency and is going down for those. And now we're dealing with, like I said, tardies, vaping, not that they're not serious, but that's a lot better than what we were dealing with.
Maybe cell phones included in that?
Electronic devices, but even they are going down, so... I know Mr. Leonard and I talk about data, Ms. Payne and I do, and so it's, uh, we're always looking at that and seeing where our problem areas are and, uh, and trying to work on that.
Something that, uh, Ms. Burgash was very concerned with, and I am too, and that's bullying. Are you seeing a den- decrease in the number of referrals and so forth for bullying?
True bullying, the answer is yes. There have been some incidents that we've had to deal with at a higher level, but we deal with it. Yes, yes, sir.
Give you one example that frustrates, and I, I will be individual here, I'll say it frustrates me cause I don't know how everybody else feels about it. In order to get, you can call it a hope scholarship or basically to get, end up getting what you want like choice, all you have to do is claim bullying.
That's correct.
You claim bullying, you receive that. There's many times, mi- the, the majority of times, I can use that word, when bullying is claimed and we review it, investigate it, whatever word you want to use for it, it is found not to be bullying, but we are required to still offer the hope scholarship. So every Friday, this is a great month to have this conversation cause we're gonna recognize our positive behavior schools here on Tuesday night. But every Friday, we send out information, um, on key performance indicators, you can call them goals, strategies. What we knew, two items we knew, we knew we needed to improve in were attendance and behavior. Um, our attendance is ranging anywhere from ninety-one to ninety-two, ninety, ninety-three percent each week. Our behavior, we measure that through a positive number. Uh, yesterday it was ninety-eight point two-seven percent of our students did not have a referral yesterday. And we look at that every day. Now where I, this is again, where I know we need to con- continue to improve. When you look at it and Tom and them run these numbers for us, we put it on our website, we're not hiding it, it's out there. When you look at year-to-date, it's a much lower number than that and it's because we've got repeat offenders. Obviously, our consequences aren't working the way they need to. Well, that's on me, we need to improve in that area and we will continue to do so. But I believe that is much better than it has been, but it's not where it needs to be. So, we're in total agreement about what we need to do, our schools, deans, um, the teachers and their classroom management is only getting better and the hard work that they do, day in and day out, is showing dividends because guess what correlates to attendance and behavior? Achievement, so, I, I was fired up yesterday about another thing, y'all got me fired up today. I mean, we're getting where we need to be and that's what we're gonna do.
Absolutely.
That's a good fire. And I will say, I, I talked to two principals in the last week or so and both of them said that, uh, superintendent and your staff has given them all the support to handle anybody that's doing disruption, so, um, it has improved a lot. Um, I, I said this to the superintendent the other day and I'll, I'll share it with you. I have gotten less phone calls now with him than I did even with the first superintendent I served with. So, uh, another thing, watch out on the number of referrals that are reported or some, or the stats on discipline cause just because it's going down don't necessarily mean it's getting better. A school teacher's got a high number of disciplinary actions, sometimes got more control of the situation than somebody that has very little reporting. Uh, matter of fact, there was a large school, well, one of the largest school districts in the state of Florida, that had, uh, nothing reported and the Department of Education had to lower the boom. They, they had come up with a way to where they didn't have to put in, uh, certain of these SEER-type, uh, records, you know? So, you're going, you're gonna find out more why he's... So you're going, you're going to find out more what he's did, talking to principals and those out there that are actually in the field. But, uh, much better than it was, um, since Keith took charge.
Mr. Spence.
I just wanted to, while the opportunity, and the superintendent mentioned the upcoming PBIS achievement awards. I think that if there are parents who are asking questions about what's going on with behaviors in schools, that they need to know that there are programs that are active and operating and doing very well. Every year, our positive behavior, uh, improvement scores and, and that program, uh, gets higher and higher standards. We have more schools that get recognized by the state, uh, for that program and how well it's doing. But we also have other programs, we have the Leader in Me at the high school at Pine Forest, uh, off the top of my head. Um, the program they're using about, um, the students working together and stuff. It, it's kind of like the Leader in Me, and that name will come to me once we end the meeting. But anyhow, but there are programs in place. The other thing that I've found and have seen is that, uh, parents sometimes react to what they see on social media. And I'm going to go back to an incident that was at a high school, and it was reported in the community or by those on social media that there were these ten different fights. It was one fight videoed by ten different people, submitted on different days. And so it looked like there was a major problem at one school, it was one incident. And so the community needs to know that too. I'm not saying that to, you know, to cover anything, I'm just trying, many times the students exacerbate a situation by doing things on social media, making it look like it's a repetitive thing when it was one incident. And, and so when we talk to parents or talk to people in the public, we let them, need to let them know, these programs are in place that deal with behavior, have students accepting responsibility for their behavior. And we've seen the increase, and, you know, I, last week I went to the Leader in Me demonstration at, uh, at, um, Sherwood, and, and it was awesome. The students taking, you know, taking, um, responsibility for their behavior and for their classmates. So that when they see another student doing something positive or negative, they're the ones who are saying, hey, good job, or, oh, that's not the way we behave here. So we have a lot of good things going on, a lot of people just aren't aware of it.
And I'd like to say this, Mr. Thompson, and I go, go way back, and he's always done an outstanding job. I think one of the things that we fight is a belief and myth of, of public education. That's why I say we need to put our best foot forward and toot our own horn. Uh, we do a good job of discipline and keeping our kids safe in the Scammy County school system. And, uh, every board member needs to say that when we get a call. And we're going to react, I know Mr. Thompson and how his office reacts to anything, anytime a principal calls, uh, they're on top of it. And also, um, uh, the services of keeping our schools safe, I think we do as good a job as anybody in the state of Florida. And from my mouth, I'm always going to say it's the safest place to be. Because I believe in the Scammy County school system and the job we're doing, and I tell that to every parent. My kids went to, to public education, and if I send my kids there, uh, then I think it's good enough for anybody else's child as well. So we need to say the positive things, and we need to uphold it. It is safe to go to school and, 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 and the Scammy County school system. So, uh, uh, if that parent wants to talk to me, I'd be glad to talk to them.
Can I add one more?
Yes.
Yes, I do agree, um, but I do think that we need to toot our own horn. Um, in my previous position as school liaison for NAS, I dealt with a lot of parents moving into Pensacola. Of course, the first thing they do is research on the internet. And you and I know that sometimes that's not the accurate picture. So we want to make sure to toot our own horn, and because there are some great resources, great programs, and, um, can we tweak it? Sure, we can always change, that's, that's part of growing. Uh, but I want to commend superintendent, the staff, for the hard work and dedication you're doing.
William?
Yes, sir.
So we, the ESOL training that was going to be on June, uh, the sixteenth day we were looking, they're going to do, they're going to do it at Spencer Bibbs, so we can have our, we can have our board workshop here at nine o'clock on that date, okay? I didn't bump on Mr. Wilson, did you? Malugato.
Thank, thank you for the update, anything else from the, on that item? Can I just move on, I think I have the next item update on, um, day in legislature. And that was an interesting time for me being in Tallahassee. Uh, I tell people I felt like a hot dog in a steak factory. Uh, March nineteenth through the twentieth, I was down there with a lot of big wigs, and, and it was interesting. Um, had a chance to meet with Senator Don Gates and also, uh, Representative Michelle Salzman. Both of them were very, very nice, gave me, gave me their time. I felt kind of special because, uh, y'all, if you know Michelle, she, she's animated, and when she saw me, she just lit up. And then, uh, everybody was trying to see Senator Gates, and I guess it helps being six-five. And, uh, he, he was able to give me about fifteen minutes with him. But did present to him, uh, both, both of our legislative priorities of continued success for the Scammy County school system. Spoke to him about increased funding, hiring experience, uh, educators, mental health, school safety, and, and, uh, voluntary pre-K. Along with the, uh, Florida School Board Association platform, which, uh, also entailed hurricane relief, uh, communities. We wasn't hit as much, but that was one of the items that was a platform for the, uh, Florida School Board Association. Along with administrative efficiency, which is new buzzword for deregulation. We're all, um, districts to establish schools start times based on input from parents, families, and students attending those districts. I'm glad we had that input as well. Another one of the platforms was attendance and accountability, empowering districts to address the chronic absenteeism uh, in their county's school safety. And law enforcement support, want to continue to make sure that public schools are safe. And then also another initiative on, for the platform of FSBA was the educational funding and fiscal responsibility. Where we want to increase the student allocation by five percent, increase mental health allocation, increase school safety, support workforce, um, uh, development, uh, provide full-time pre-K, and, and also to recalculate the capital outlay for FTE. So those are the initiatives that we've been, uh, that we addressed when we were in Tallahassee. And there are some things that are coming down the pike, such as, um, State Bill one sixty-six, administrative efficiency in public school. That's put up, put by Senator Simon, which, um, changes the graduation requirements. So the ELA assessment and Algebra I EOCs account for thirty percent of the total grade. So those are some other things that were, um, put forth. It was very interesting, had a chance to really, really, uh, hopefully make an impact for Scammy County School District and building those relationships with our legislators, uh, and hopefully next year, somebody else can go. Other than me. But no, I enjoyed it. No, so that was, I'm trying, I'm trying. So, uh, next was my item as well, give you update on the Carol McIntosh Initiative, is something that we're trying to instill. We're piloting in three schools, uh, the Carol McIntosh Initiative is something we voted on last year, uh, which addressed, and it's in honor of Carol McIntosh, an administrator that suddenly passed away. Uh, and we want to honor her by some of the things in each one of these schools and District Three, and hopefully expands to other schools in the near future, absenteeism, conflict resolution, parental involvement, career education, and mentoring. As of, speaking right now, we've, I've met, and also superintendent, I think, has spoken to him as well. Global Learning is working on absenteeism, CAYS is working on the parental involvement, and CAYS and Mark Clay Elementary is working on mentoring, and we're helping them with those aspects. And you have anything to add, Mr. Superintendent?
That's a great report, the one thing that we haven't done, Mr. Williams and I plan to do it, is it, we hope maybe next week is, uh, we have some signs that say this site is the home of Carol McIntosh Education Initiative. Uh, we look to do that as soon as possible, but so far, everybody's been so busy, we haven't been able to make that happen. Um, very excited, a lot of the things that y'all just talked about, when you talked about behavior, when we're talking about attendance, it's really, it's not just happening at those three sites. That just happens to be where we're focusing, those schools are in District Three. I'm excited to tell you it's happening at all sites. Uh, so very, 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 very excited about what we have going on, thank you, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
And you rolled them two items very close together, but Keith, the, did, with your association FADS, he, I know you gave a report on FSBA. Uh, you got some information on what FADS is worried about, uh, this session?
I do, um, it appears as though the school start time will be, that bill will be modified to where it's a local decision as to when your schools will start. But what you have to do, what you get the opportunity to do, is you have to submit your plan that shows why you start at the time you start. And, um, we had a meeting on Monday, um, with our superintendents in the Northwest Region. Um, we are already in compliance. So we're okay. Um, we do four bus tiers, uh, many school districts only do two and/or three. They'll have a little more difficult time. Uh, there was one school district that does five. I can't imagine how, how they afford to do that, but they, they do. Uh, the other thing was, uh, what'd you call it, Mr. Williams, what's the new tangle term for it? Administrative efficiency, the deregulation bill is making its way, uh, through there. The thirty percent of the grade for those EOCs is a, is a good route to go, they feel very confident that that will pass. Um, the, the bills that we're worried about, there's one local bill as it relates to what happens with vacant property and/or if you have declining enrollment. Uh, many thirty-seven school districts, uh, in the state of Florida, out of sixty-seven have declining enrollment. So there are many school districts worried about that, what happens to vacant buildings. Uh, because if you do what you're supposed to do, you got declining enrollment, you start limiting the number of schools that you have. But what are you allowed to do with the schools you vacate? That is one that the superintendent association, two things they want to know, and Mr. St. Seer asked it every time we talk about, what is the definition of declining FTE? Which definition are you going to use, are you going to use unweighted or weighted? Um, and then there was one other one, I didn't, if I'd have known you were going to ask me, I would have made sure I read through everything. Um, but the, the biggest thing now wasn't what we had requested as our legislative plat- platform. The biggest thing now that superintendents across the state are really concerned about is the budget and the cut to some, um, add-on FTE values. Some districts have a different idea, but they may be in a different situation than we are. They may not just have a half-cent sales tax, they may also have a local referendum where there's a one meal. So they're able to do some things from a financial standpoint that our school district is not, and most of the school districts are in the same boat we are. So budget was where the majority of the focus is after legislation now. So thank you for that opportunity.
Anything else? Okay, um, next we have facilities, finance, and budget update, Mr. Superintendent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And what I wanted to do is give you, um, a few, a few topics today. Kind of an overview of the FTE, uh, the Senate FEFP and the House FEFP comparison. Then we'll look at Advalorem forecast, and then, uh, debt service requirements, which will lead us into a facilities conversation. So with those in mind, I'm going to go ahead and get started with the FTE, and we'll take a look at where we're at, what we project for the new year, and what's the difference in that. So traditional schools, on the third FEFP calculation for current year, that's two thousand twenty-five, we're currently in the, uh, third calculation. Traditional schools, which include Achieve Academy and Acceleration, even though those are contracted schools, we've got, I've got them in this, uh, traditional school list. And then I've split out the virtual, just for illustration, and the juvenile justice. In another slide, I'm going to combine virtual and juvenile justice up into the traditional, but that'll be the next slide. Okay, so take a look at the, uh, section where it says traditional schools, virtual schools, D, uh, juvenile justice centers, DJJ centers. The subtotal there for all of those is thirty-four thousand three seventy-seven, that's current, that's the current student count. Projected into the new year, that count goes to thirty-three seven sixty-two as a total for a negative six hundred and fourteen point five two, unweighted FTE. So that's a massive decline, uh, from current year to next year. And then you've got charter schools and family empowerment scholarships, just to show you where they're at. Charter schools currently at about fifteen sixty-nine, and then for the new year, they're adding about a hundred and one. I think most of that is PJ, P, uh, PSC, adding another grade level, I believe. Uh, family empowerment scholarships is a, is a huge increase from the current year. Five thousand forty-seven is where we're at for the current year. Family empowerment scholarships are then projected by DOE, this is not us, by DOE to go to sixty-two thirty-four. So that's an, almost a twelve-hundred increase in family empowerment scholarships. Certainly, much of that correlates with our six hundred and fourteen decline. But overall, if you look, it looks like we're increasing. So we've got, and that's what Mr. Leonard was talking about, it looks like we're increasing in the per, in the student count by six hundred and seventy-four. But from a traditional schools funding for what benefits this district, the revenue staying within the district, we're in a massive decline in FTE. Okay, any questions on that slide? All right, this slide is, uh, a historical view. I wanted to go and take the traditional schools, this is all schools except charter and, and the scholarships. This is all of our schools except the charter schools and the scholarships. So look at the first column, this is the shutdown year, two thousand twenty. We finished that year, the shutdown year, at traditional schools of thirty-seven, uh, thirty-seven nine eighty-nine point, uh, eight-two. Look at the decline in the next year. That's that sec, that's that, in the parentheses, fifteen ninety-two point nine. That is the drop from the shutdown year to two thousand twenty-one. We lost sixteen hundred unweighted, they never came back. The next year, we had another decline of two hundred and thirteen, two thousand twenty-two, traditional schools. The next year, a hundred and fifty-eight negative. The next year, twelve hundred and one, that's when we handed off Warrington Middle School. Two thousand twenty-five and the current year, we're down four hundred and forty-five over the prior year. And next year is projected at that six hundred and fourteen, so that's forty-two hundred students, that's two thousand, out of our regular schools. The charter schools have increased, uh, about eight hundred and eight, and that's, uh, an increase mainly led by the, uh, Warrington Middle School, Warrington Prep. Scholarships, if you look at the scholarships, they have increased from two thousand twenty, five thousand four hundred and forty-three, all the way to the far right. So they've gone from seven ninety-one, that's, um, I've got a note there, McKay and FES were separated during two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. Through the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two year, I don't have them separated, but combined. And then McKay folded into the FES, so they have, you have the McKay portion and you have the regular student portion uh, after two thousand twenty-two. But anyway, all of the total scholarship, total scholarships, sixty-two hundred, a five thousand forty, four hundred and forty-three increase since two thousand twenty. Any questions on that?
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Look at the bottom, if you look at the bottom, all the way to the bottom of the totals, that looks like a two thousand, uh, twenty-four increase over that same time period, that's all scholarships.
Um, Chair, on these, especially when you get to projected in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, which was a big jump, is, is it still my understanding we don't know how many of those students actually attended our schools, or?
You have a better, DOE is working on that.
Okay, so.
Very much so.
Cause I see this big jump, and it's.
Cause I see this big jump and it's, and it's making me wonder.
There have been times when we were claiming a student with a student I D. number for F T E, and they had already received a scholarship.
Right.
That's happening. That's the best example I can give you of, uh, chaos.
The rest of these numbers make sense. It's just when I come down and look at that, that's, that data don't look right down, when it go on five thousand something. Unless they're counting everybody that's gotten a scholarship from.
That's a projection. The current, the five thousand forty-seven is current year, and next year, the sixty-two is projected by D O E.
But I think what we don't know is, is that, out of that, how many of them actually attended our schools?
We may know.
That's what I've been hearing all across the state.
It is their hope to be able to make that clear in the future.
I, I got you on the top numbers. I mean, that's, yeah, we've, we've had a drop.
Okay. Now, I'm gonna give you an illustration, make it real. Okay, here's our traditional school, forty-two hundred unweighted drop. If you take the ratio of the school's population, that would spread out to elementary at two thousand, middle at eight hundred and eighty, eight hundred and thirty-eight, and high school about thirteen hundred. The average school in those grade categories, elementary, five hundred twenty-one, middle, eight thirty-seven, high school, fourteen seventeen. That last row is the equivalent of an entire school that would be staffed, operated, just like normal, with zero students. So, we have the equivalent of four elementaries, one middle, and high school since two thousand twenty, operating without any students. Fully staffed, fully operation. That's the, that's where we're at, and it's, it's very serious. We're seeing the effects of it. We're seeing how, um, really the revenue cannot keep up with what's being spent out there. Especially when you lose, in that last slide, four hundred and something from prior year to current year, four hundred and something unweighted. That's a massive drop in the revenue. Okay, the next slide is what the House and the Senate are proposing. House and Senate are proposing those first two columns, and then I've got the third F E F P calculation in the far right. So, currently, the base student allocation, which simply kicks off the funding formula for the F E F P. The base student allocation is fifty-three thirty, currently. The House version and the Senate version are there. They're both le, one, the House is less than one percent increase. The Senate is, uh, one and a quarter percent increase. And as we talked about yesterday, we like that to be at least four or five percent so we can break ev, to break the district even and give a raise and break the district even. That's not happening next year. In the current year, it only increased, a footnote at the bottom, from prior year to current year, it only increased three point seven-two percent, which gave us around eight million dollars in new revenue. Uh, the year before that, we had about twelve million in new, new revenue. So, next, next year, you'll look at the highlighted portion. Next year, the, based on the Senate and the House and declining enrollment, all mixed together, the House version would be a decrease in revenue based on current year of about three point eight million. The Senate would remain flat, about a hundred and forty-two K on the increase. So, you'll see how serious it is, that even with a small increase based on declining enrollment, we can't even keep up with, uh, a, a break-even scenario. So, the total dollars on the unweighted F T E, total dollars on the unweighted F T E is the bottom. It all totals up, when it runs through the formula, is eighty-nine thirty-four on the House, nine thousand forty-six on the Senate, compared to eight hundred and eighty currently. Minor, minor increases, less than one percent on the House, way less than one percent, and then the Senate, less than two percent. Neither one of those will help us really break this thing even without some drastic changes next year. All right, so that's the F E F P. Here's the, just a quick value of what those scholarships are. That's sixty-two thirty-four, that's worth, those scholarships are worth fifty-two million dollars. And current year, the five thousand forty-seven is worth forty-two million. That pulls right out of the F E F P. In the calculation, there's a column for adjustments, and that is adjusted out. All right. Here's a quick, I just want to give you a quick, another cost increase. Or even though it's very minor compared to previous years, this year was very small. But next year, the retirement rate will go up a little bit, but even a little bit is right, just almost nine hundred thousand dollars on current salaries. About nine hundred thousand dollar increase on current salaries. Okay? So, we have to overcome that also. Teacher salary increases, the former categorical is still calculated for us by D O E, even though it's not set out as a specific categorical. It's still, we still have to follow the, the formula, and we have been over the years. The House version, there's a maintenance portion to keep it going, what's been done in previous years, that's about fifteen million. And then the growth portion is the part that we would hand out as salary increases to the teachers and all those on the instructional salary scale. Not just the teachers, but the guidance media, all the, anybody on this instructional scale. This is the amount that goes to those teachers in terms of salaries and benefits, all the, every, the total cost has to fit inside that. So, the House version, about one point three million dollar increase, and the Senate version, about three million dollar increase. Now, on a percentage basis, I'd have to think about that. I think, uh, the Senate would probably be in the neighborhood of, um, one and a half percent maybe? You think that'd be about right? Yeah. And then the House version wouldn't, wouldn't make, uh, one percent. So, where does the rest of it come from? All right, uh, I'm gonna give you a preview of the ad valorem taxes. This is in the calculations for the House and the Senate. They're using a taxable school value, top line, first column, thirty-six point four billion. The current certified tax roll that we started with in the current year was thirty-four point one billion. So, the change, two point three, about a six point eight percent increase in the tax roll. Now, of course, that'll change once we get to certified tax roll, July one, that'll change. It'll, it'll be similar, but it won't be the same numbers. But it looks like we're headed towards a six to seven percent increase in the tax roll. Uh, the millage rates that they're using, required local effort, current year, three point zero nine five. And then we have, uh, the discretionary portion that never changes, point seven four eight, for total mills of three point eight four three. The proposed, proposed is three point eight four seven. So, a slight increase in the millage rate, point zero zero four. The required local effort is an estimate right now. We won't get required of the local effort till the second calculation in July. Second F E F P calculation in July will nail the required local effort. That's how we make all of our calculations and come up with the millage rate that's going to be proposed by the board. I'm not going to inclu, I didn't include capital outlay in this because it's pointless to do it. We don't have any idea what that is going to look like. We're currently at one point zero zero four. That was to make a, that was to make the total mills not re, uh, require tax, uh, increase advertisement. Okay? So, if we're jumping up about seven percent, six or seven percent, and there's a similar required local effort coming out of the state, then we're gonna be, we may be below one percent, I mean, one mill on the capital outlay if, if the goal is to not advertise a tax increase. Okay. All right, let me ta, let me show you what we've got, um, or review it. We don't always talk about this, but here's, here's what's out there in terms of our, uh, debt service requirements for the, uh, uh, COPs and sales tax revenue bond that we have out there. So, currently, we're servicing the debt on three issues. Series twenty sixteen, the balance there will be at, uh, June thirtieth, will be eighteen point two million. That final payoff date, uh, September twenty twenty-seven, it goes away, that built Beulah Middle School. The payoff date for the first two issues is in direct relation to the end of the referendum. The end of the referendum. So, which ends in December twenty twenty-seven. And we specifically intentionally tied these two debt issues to that referendum, and they're going away. So, this debt will be gone on the first two issues. The series twenty twenty A, again, that one will be also about eighteen million at June thirtieth, eighteen point three million balance. You'll see, I didn't mention this, but the percent of debt service applied to millage and the percent applied to sales tax on the first issue, it's all sales tax. It was a sales tax revenue bond. We had proceeds of sixty point six million and built that Beulah Middle School. The series twenty twenty A, eighteen million, eighteen point three million dollar balance will be at June thirtieth, coming up. We split that debt service between millage and sales tax, and there's a story behind that. It was some legislative issues there, dealt with cost of student stations. So, we split that. We fund the debt service funds with, uh, proceeds from millage and proceeds from sales tax. Fifty-eight percent of it is millage, forty-two percent is sales tax. And with all of that, we pay the debt service fund to the bank. Okay? Final payoff there is two, one, two thousand twenty-seven, and that built Pleasant Grove Elementary, or the rebuild of that one. All right, we have, the most recent issue is a series twenty twenty-three A. We've not paid any principal on that yet. Forty-one million, a hundred percent millage. It's a twenty-year issue, and it will end two, twelve, forty, forty-three. We'll all be here by the end of that. Seems like. Seems like we've been here that long. Yeah. So, that's Myrtle Grove, that, uh, as Mr. Dennis and Mr. Wazin will talk you through, may, and answer some questions on that if you need to. But that's Myrtle Grove Elementary. Those C O Ps, um, proceeds were forty-one point five million.
Terry, is Kingsville paid, the bond paid off for Kingsville?
That, that was not an issue, bond issue. That was a pure sales type.
Oh, pure, we just did on sales, okay.
So, so let me tell you what we did there. That one was a ca, that was a cash deal, but that same year is when we built Beulah Middle School, and we, we issued debt. So, one, we did a cash deal, and we issued debt on the other one. Now, I'll start this ball rolling, and I'm gonna hand it off to Mr. Dennis. We're proposing now for the board. I have an agenda item on there that's called a reimbursement resolution that we'll see when we get to the agenda items. Uh, it will kick off the timeline for a COPs issue on series twenty twenty-five. That'll be our next issue of series twenty twenty-five. Down the road, that, we've done nothing for it yet, but there'll be a series twenty twenty-seven. But that sales tax, I mean, the, um, reimbursement resolution will be the board's intention to go out for a bond, a COPs issue and provide us with the authority to go back and pick up some prior month, uh, last two or three months' worth of, uh, sunk costs of capital outlay that we have already spent or will have spent on that project before the bond, the COPs issue goes out. But anyway, it, it'll kick the, it'll kick that timeline off, and that's on the agenda. The balance, the original proceeds, uh, that's calculated by the facilities department, Mr. Wazin and Mr. Dennis, fifty-eight point eight million. Those will be the proceeds, the original balance when we begin. Now, the original balance and the, and the proceeds are different because they're in, the calculation for the original balance was made by my financial advisor, uh, Will Reed, y'all met them, Ford and Associates. Uh, when the balance is less than the proceeds, you've issued those COPs at a premium. So, we've got, we'll have a premium amount of cash that the bond purchasers paid a premium for, but we're only gonna be, um, servicing the debt on the par value, which would be fifty-four million. I don't know if that makes sense. But, uh, the proceeds are diff, is different from the amount that'll be financed, and it was the same on every other one of those we just talked about. They were issued at a premium. That means we had cash of, at the, whatever that amount is, for fifty-eight point eight to fifty-three point nine. The difference there is the premium, and then the for fifty-three point nine will be, um, a, a twenty-year bond, uh, COPs payoff. And then the series twenty twenty-seven, fifty point five million. We're gonna finance forty-seven point five. That one will be final payoff, eight, one, two thousand forty-six, and that one's just in the pipeline. So, I'll, I'll hand it off now, and they can talk to facilities with you.
So, the first three sales tax issues since nineteen ninety-seven, as Mr. Adams pointed out, in the case of Kingsville, we've always paid for our capital projects with cash. We'd squirrel away an amount each, for a series of years until we had enough to manage our large projects. And I'm gonna speak specifically to large projects. We now find ourselves in a position where we have to take on debt in order to do several things. One is to manage the escalating costs of construction. We plan our projects, and by the time we get to them, five years later, those costs of construction can sometimes double, triple, or in this most recent case, quadruple. So, we find ourselves in budgetary shortages for some of our larger projects. We also are limited in our ability to use our sales tax under new, relatively new legislation, which means we have to use a combination of millage and sales tax in order to accomplish these projects. So, those are the hindrances. When you take in escalating costs of construction and protracted timelines because of supply chain, as we've all issued, we all dealt with for the previous couple of years, these projects extend longer, and the longer they extend, the more the cost of construction tends to escalate. But we're also very proud of the fact that we've managed our cash flow, our ability to manage cash flow for incidences in the sales tax budgets. We always want to make sure we have the ability to react and respond, not just in those planned projects, but others, since that is the sole capital resource we have for all intents and purposes to manage and operate the district. Having said all that, the next two issues that Mr. St. Seer set the table for, historically, you saw the, the previous two were for individual schoo, schools, Beulah, Myrtle Grove, Pleasant Grove. Those aren't on the horizon anymore. So, what you'll see for these next two issues are an aggregation of large projects, two clusters. Some of them are projects that have been on the grid for a while. Some of them are actually ongoing right now, and because their cost of construction has escalated, we're gonna have to supplement their budget, so we're using the debt service to manage that. That's the, those are the problems that precipitated this approach. We've had great success with it in the past. We're confident that we'll be able to do exactly what we need to do without putting the district in a capital funding, financial bind. So, Mr. Wazin is gonna come up and give you a quick. So Mr. Wazin is gonna come up and give you a quick and dirty laundry list, and we'll provide you a written copy at a later time of the projects that each of these next two issues will address.
Good afternoon. As Mr. Dennis said, the cost of construction has escalated exponentially in the past five years. Covid did some things to us that we just didn't even expect. You guys are going to be voting shortly on an air conditioning project that's gonna cost almost ten million dollars. That is just an air conditioning project. So what we're looking at, and I approached Mr. Dennis and Mr. St. Seer about this, is being able to manage these larger projects that have been district initiatives for, well, prior to me, even, even my predecessor began that, those initiatives. The first two on here are the two auditoriums that we have already planned. That would be a Scambia, which we've already designed, have a contractor in place to, to do that. We haven't actually gotten a guaranteed maximum price yet for, for obvious reasons. We're still trying to get there. The next one would be the Tate High School Auditorium, and then a third project is at Pine Forest, where we would build them a gymnasium and renovate their auditorium, or their gematorium, I should say, into an auditorium. Doing the reverse is, is almost impossible. We could not turn that into a functional gymnasium. We could turn it into a functional auditorium, but we cannot turn it into a functional gymnasium. For those of you who haven't seen it, it's, it is literally, it's a half a gym, and it's half an auditorium. It's awful. The other initiative that we're looking at in this is a classroom, prototypical classroom addition for, to replace our modulators and replace our, our, our portable that we have. Ironically, the portables are older than the modulators, and the modulators are in worse condition, and they just don't hold up. They've got to the end of their useful life. So the intent would be to develop a prototypical design, six, eight, ten, twelve, whatever the, whatever the classroom addition needed to be for the, for the facility, similar to when we did the covered play buildings. We'll choose one architect, we'll design the prototypical design, we get economy of scale in that, the only site work, or the only design work on each one would be site work, and then we would move those out into, to the locations where most of those situations would require that. Like I said, some of it is to replace portables, to deal with capacity, some of it's just to deal with aging infrastructure and that. Yes, sir?
Uh, you need to do the new wing design.
Yes, sir.
You're gonna keep staying away from the gang bathrooms, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, yes, yes, sir, exactly.
Okay.
And we've been, we've been having some discussion in my shop about what that actually looks like, what those modular, and, and this, the idea is to do something that we can put at an elementary school, at a middle school, and a high school that functions across all the grade levels. Now, this would not function for the smaller elementary grades, but it would function for the older elementary grades, and so that would be something that would be very similar, and you've seen them, there's several of them around the district that we've put in over the years. We have, like you said, a lot of, learned a lot from not having gang toilets and things like that in those situations, so that would include that. And that is, that is the first initiative that, that, that Mr. St. Seer spoke about. The second initiative would then be to begin to look at the Beulah intermediate on the property that we purchased in that area. That's probably looking at something like a six to seven hundred student, much, much like we're doing right now at Myrtle Grove size-wise. Property's beautiful, I think it'd be a great place for a school, it's really gonna be a, really would be neat. Then we would continue the classroom additions, and that, therefore, that would free up the roughly forty million dollars in sales tax that we get for the things like the Washington gymnas, or Washington air conditioner, Washington pool, and just a whole laundry list of, quite frankly, projects that are not sexy, but we gotta have, water's gotta flow, air conditioners have to run, sewer's gotta work, you know, those things all have to function, and that allows us to free that sales tax up to deal with those type of projects as we go. We're also in the middle of trying to, to deal with, you know, just upgrading and improving our, our facilities, just curb appeal. You know, not only does this make a difference to the way the schools look, it also makes a difference to the way people want to send their children. We just spent some time talking about how we're losing FTEs. Well, we want to be able to make places that our kids want to go to, parents want to send their children to, and our, our teachers want to teach in. And I think that's really important to be able to do that, but that's really a down and dirty on that. I'll be glad to answer any specific questions they'll have.
Oh, go ahead. You said that we currently have some of these classroom additions at some schools?
We do. Workman, there's, there's, if there's a classroom addition at Workman, there's a classroom addition at Brentwood. These, these were done in the early two thousands, right around, really right around the time that Global was built.
And, and these are permanent structures?
Permanent structures. My, my idea is a brick and block construction with a standing seam metal roof. Most, fortunately, the Esra money gave us some opportunity to upgrade a lot of the mechanical systems in, in a lot of the facilities, and we took that opportunity to upsize chillers so that we will be able to take advantage of this, of the oversize of the chillers that we put there for the capacity, so we wouldn't have to buy chillers and that. So we're trying to keep that price down by utilizing some of the federal that we got last three years ago.
Okay, I, I'll, I do, I'll, I'll go to both Brentwood and Workman to look at those.
Sure. And keep in mind, this will be a totally different design. They were both designed by two different, two different architects. I think the one, I know for fact, the one at, at Workman, Tony Knowles designed when he worked for Adache.
But you're, you're gonna look at, like the covered play areas, a standard one that would go the same way.
Prototypical, that's correct.
Exactly. Every, it would, it would look, look almost identical, the, we would change it, of course, to fit the, the architecture, the brick, and the, the roof color, and those type of things.
Would, would you have a, two, two designs, one for a single floor, one for?
No, sir, we would try and keep it a, we would try and keep it a single, a single story.
For some areas, you may have to go vertical.
I think we've, we're pretty good in most of the locations that we have without having to, to stack. I'd, I'd rather not stack. We get into a multitude of-
I asked you about stackables yesterday.
Well, actually, yeah.
The problem with stack, the problem with stackables is those are essentially modular construction, which don't hold up, they're not as durable. A two-story construction, you know, when we have a constrained footprint, we'll go vertical, like we did at Suter, like we did in, in other locations.
Beulah Middle, we got, we got-
Beulah and Myrtle Grove are all classic examples, but in most cases where we have a preponderance of portables and modulators, they're already on a footprint, they're already spread out, so this allows us to build a permanent structure in, in the same location that those other footprints sit on. And if you have ten portables, you know, on a location, that's enough footprint for many, many classrooms, because remember, each portable has a twenty-foot setback from each, from the other. So Workman is actually at what we call a five-by-five, five classrooms on one side, five on the other. We'd be looking at something like that.
Now, cafeteria at Pine Forest is not underneath this, right?
No, sir, we, that's a cash deal as well, yes, sir. And, and to Mr. Dennis's point, one of the first ones out of the box in this thing is, is we're, we're looking through this, Enslie is, is really a good place to, to start this prototypical design, because Enslie is, they're overcrowded, they have a bunch of portables, but they have a ton of land out there.
It's, it's not gonna be like the, the wing we got at Pine Forest, that, out there in the parking lot?
No, sir, that's a modular, that's a modular, so that's what we're trying to replace.
Those things ain't hold up.
That's what we're replacing.
Yes, sir, exactly. Yeah, this is, this is not, this is permanent construction with a, with a, at least a fifty year lifespan.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
We got a lot of vacant portables around the school district.
We, we do, we do, and, and we, we've done a really pretty good job of getting that down. We are down under a hundred portables now. We have a lot of idle portable sitting in locations, and the Washington project, I was just speaking to Ms. Morgan about this, this is a good example of how we can use these things. We have five portable sitting there right now that are not being utilized. Our capital crew's gonna go in, renovate those minorly, you know, carpet, ceiling, make sure the air conditioner works, 'cause we're gonna use them while we do this, do this renovation, where we pull these kids out of the classroom and put them into the portable for, say, six weeks, we move another setting. We're also bringing in three more portables to that location, then when we're done, we tear them down, and they're gone.
They're still included in our footprint for, for state, right, for the capacity? Are these per, portable?
Yes, sir, all of, all, we, you know, we have permanent and, and-
It's gonna have kind of a soft sense of the excess seating, I guess.
Yes, sir. And we do, we've, we, one of the things that we did do, we did an inventory of all the portables we had, we did a physical condition assessment of every portable in the district. We determined where, what condition they were in, what they needed, and that's how we make determinations as to whether or not to make them go away.
Now, some of them, you, you won't be able to move them.
Well, some of them, I, as I mentioned, we can't move the wooden ones.
Can't put them on the road.
That's right, that's right. The, the aluminum portable's the only ones that we can, that we can move. The wooden portable's we can no longer even move, they have to be demolished in place.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
I believe we started, in my conversations with you, we started at a hundred and forty portable many years ago, our modules and-
We had about a hundred and forty portals about a decade ago. We're down under a hundred.
We're down to about ninety, ninety now.
Ninety-something, yes, sir. We tear down about fifteen of, we tear down about fifteen a year.
That, that's good progress.
Thank you.
I have looked at the modulators, and you are absolutely correct. They, they're, I'm, I'm, I know that, knowing you, you've got a planned replacement for these things, because some of them are rough. I'll just leave it at that. On the wings that you're talking about building, I wanna be sure I understood what Mr. Adams' question was. You're, you're designing classrooms for all three levels, except for maybe the early childhood.
Yes, sir.
And those, at all three levels, they would have restrooms within them, not gang toilets.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Because that is a huge issue in cutting down discipline.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
The other question I wanted to ask is about our debt service, and how our debt service compares with other districts from, I was sitting here looking at that, and I've, I've seen some, some, from some other districts, and we look like we're in, in really good shape. Is that, is that a good assessment of that for debt service?
We, we're very good shape. We're very low on our debt ratio, so we have capa, plenty of capacity, and even with not levying a full one point five, we have capacity, or we wouldn't be doing this. If it got to be an emergency situation where we had to go out and do something, and we knew it a year ahead of time, and we needed to levy more, so we have plenty of capacity, and, and we're probably one of the lowest debt districts in the state.
That's, that's where I was leading, so the, the board needs to understand that that's a good comfort level for us to be in there with that. It's like a home, it's like a home mortgage, you don't go out and make five thousand dollars a month and commit a six thousand, six thousand dollar house payment to it. But that, that also speaks well of, of advanced planning and so forth on your part, so thank you so much for that. That's all I have.
They get rated on their bonds. What, what's our bond right now?
Double A minus.
Double A? Yeah, so.
And, and now's the time to go. And I, I have a-
Bond rates are going up.
Yes.
Minimal bonds in the market.
I mean-
CPI today showed we're, we're dropping in inflation. Fuel, all those items, so right now, it's, it's heading in the right direction for you two gentlemen.
I have a Gantt chart that outlines all of this. I'll email to all of you. I didn't have it electronically, but it outlines what, what we're doing and the timetable and what we're doing. I'll have that all out to you probably this afternoon. Thank you all.
So it's been a while since you've seen this resolution that's being brought forth for Tuesday. Remember, we get z, as far as I know, we still get zero in Pico. Okay, so, you know, we, we have our half-cent sales tax, which, thank our citizens for that. This is one instance, you saw, you heard two or three instances in the past where we paid cash, and that was the way to go. Why? We need to make sure we leave some half-cent sales tax money available, we can issue this debt, when we're in a good situation to be able to do so. The market should be fine with the double A bond, double A minus bond market rating. We've gotta do it now. The bottom line. And I'm, I am really, really tight. It's hard to even think about this, but it is what we need to do, because it's in the best interest of our citizens. So I really appreciate our Facilities people, finance, operations for working, working our way through this, and it's good for you as an elected body as well, so.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the report, outstanding. Do we need to take a break, or we wanna keep going? Let's take a ten-minute break.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.